I call to order the meeting of the mayor and aldermen in the town of Montegoat this August 26, 2024. We'll start with the roll call vote. I'm sorry. Well.
Doran, Jessica, here.
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 Here. If the chaplain will allow for our prayer.
Yes, if you would pray with me, please. Our Lord our God, you created all that is and ever will be. Forgive us for the damage we have done to your creation. As your children, guide us to follow your ways, as set out by your Son Jesus, to love you and to love our neighbors as ourselves. Especially, we ask that you guide the mayor and aldermen of the city of Montegoat as they work to fulfill your desire for our town. Open all our minds to civil discourse, mutual respect and understanding. Continue to watch over our first responders just as they watch over all of us. And, Lord, we ask for peace wherever there is conflict in the world. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to your life and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you received in your package. You received in your packets the minutes of the July 29 and August 15 meeting. I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes as submitted.
I'll make motion.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded to accept the minutes of July 29 and August 15 as submitted. Is there any discussion or correction? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The minutes are accepted as submitted. Citizens' comments. The citizens will be limited to three minutes of conversation and comment, and then we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. Are there any citizens that wish to be heard? Martha Anne.
I want to let everybody know that our church, Morton Memorial United Methodist Church, is having a clean Montegoat's Main Street event on September 7. Invite everybody to come out and pick up trash, and we're going to serve a light lunch at 11:00. So we're just going to, 9:00 to 11:00, we'll pick up trash and 11 o'clock, come into the fellowship home. Light lunch, not anything exciting. But there will be cookies.
Martha Anne, what's the date?
September 7.
September 7. Morton Memorial is organizing a Keep Montegoat Beautiful and Clean, and it was wonderful that they're taking that initiative and hopefully we can get out and support it. Thank you for that, Martha Anne. Are there any other citizen comments? Lucy?
Can I come up?
Sure.
Hi.
I just want to share something with you that's been on my mind and kind of has come up again, so I thought this would be the time to do it. Excuse me for the frog in my throat. I'm Lucy Keeble for Concerned Citizens of Montegoat. It's been four years since I first stood here and stood up for our people, for our children and for our neighbors, for the future of Montegoat, for its safety and its health. We were then, as we are today, against air and water pollution, against 24/7 noise and light pollution, against drug crime, sex and human trafficking, and against a toxic development so close, too close, to where people live and children play. We embrace a sustainable and healthy economic future for Montegoat as the gateway to the gifts of the South Cumberland Plateau and for a town, our town, with a hopeful heart heading towards its brightest future in decades. For four years, many in Montegoat have been in anguish and remain gut-wrenching at the possibility of a truck stop in this location because this is our town. It is where we live. To the developers, I say, why not join the community in its campaign to imagine the best of Montegoat rather than doubling down on something that will bring great harm to our reliable economy and to our citizens? You have many acres and many options to work with us, to complement rather than compete with a better vision for Montegoat. There are so many, many ways to grow your wealth without crushing the soul of our community and poisoning our residents with a facility that is designed primarily to cater to hundreds of 18-wheelers a day at a one-stop shop in the place that we call home. When members of the Kilgore-Braver clan, who do not live here or next to a truck stop where they live, continue to blame the neighbors for buying their homes too close to the interstate, demonstrating no clear understanding of our geography or of our previous zoning, I want to ask them, what would have you think that wedging a truck stop next to a decades-old residential neighborhood, parks and playgrounds, an elementary school, a library, a community center, pedestrian and biking trails, community gardens, sites on the National Historic Registry, was anything other than a bad idea?
Excuse me, Lucy, you're approaching the three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Not only a bad idea, I'll read real fast, but a cruel and long-running, vengeful one which you have made clear to the neighbors in the most violent, horrific ways and to the town by continuing to fly in the face of its ordinances showing your basic disrespect for our officials and our laws. Counsel, for you, you are here to serve the people, to work for the people and to respect the people you serve. Your decisions should always first and foremost promote the health and safety of the community you serve. Liking a developer personally or fearing what a developer might do to you are no reasons to decide to inflict harm on the people you serve. RBT's vested property rights have expired. The law makes that clear. The council needs to stand by that law. There is no need for political decision-making on this issue. No vote is needed. If you are asked to vote, please remember, your vote is about us, the people you serve, about our children and grandchildren, about our future. It is not about kowtowing to any developer. These developers have many, many options. They've been offered millions more than they paid for the property. Directions for them are almost limitless.
I have to thank you for your time now.
The people who live here, many who have invested their life savings to be here in this place they call home, they do not have those options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
I will be very brief. I just want this council to be aware that there are investors coming. DeBeau Center thought that this was all over. I spoke with some people this morning. It's going to be interesting to see what happens next with them. They're building 60 villas incorporated with their hotel, and they want it to be a sort of like a small blackberry farm with a five-star restaurant, which would be a tremendous attraction. I know other investors, and I have encouraged them to come, said Montegoat's happening. I read that study that you, the city paid, I don't know how much to have done, and it was enlightening. I mean, it's like, yeah, these guys are on the right page. They know what this is about, what we're trying to do, what we want here. And of course, the first thing they said is, not another truck stop, we have one. And, you know, when you pay somebody that kind of money for their professional opinion and you don't follow it, it's like, well, you just wasted a lot of money. But at any rate, my point is, there's just tremendous opportunity here for growth, for small business, for restaurants. And I can tell you now, the people I know out of Dallas, the people I know out of Nashville, they're not coming if this happens. They will go the other way. So I want you to consider that, the small businesses and restaurants that want to come here, but, you know, 500 feet or 1,000 feet, whatever it is, down the road, it won't happen.
Thank you. Were there any other citizens wish to be heard?
I'd like to see Rodney build a motel out there. I'd like Mountain Inn down there. I'd like to see that.
Any other comment? Mr. Lang?
Yeah. Will the council talk about the water shortage during the meeting? Is that something that's going to be discussed or?
I can address that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Katie?
I have several items. The first is that I was looking at the Montegoat municipal code, and online with M Task, it says the last time it was updated was in 2016, and there's a number of things that have been passed since then, so it's hard to access information that's current. So it'd be great if that could get updated.
I have sent all of the ordinances to M Task. They are doing us a new code.
Fantastic. Thank you. The next thing is, and I have several times started to call the police department about this, but then the blue van disappears, that there is a blue van in town that parks in front of our office, and then it moves to the park. And it sits in front of the park all day, and then it moves back to our office, and then it disappears, and sometimes it's a, I don't know where it goes, but then it's back in front of our office, and then it's back at the park. And it's very disturbing, and every time I go to call the police, it's gone again. So.
We followed it over here. It was ahead of us when we.
Excuse me, one at a time. I'll continue. We're going to refer that to the police department shortly.
So I just would like to bring that to your attention, the police's attention, and I know that it's disturbing people at the park, and I know that it has frightened some people around our office. And thirdly, I don't know if you've addressed the first reading of the campgrounds for special exception?
That will be addressed tonight. It'll be removed from the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to be heard at this time? Paul?
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that anyone who speaks comes up here and speaks, because we can't hear them back there. Anyone who speaks should not be allowed to speak from out there because we don't know who they are, can't hear them, it's just a voice coming out of nowhere. So if somebody wants to speak, they need to get up here and say who they are, and then I can speak.
Point taken.
So we know who's speaking.
Thank you. We will do that. Any other citizens wish to be heard at this time? Next on the agenda is the mayor's communications, and I have several communications. I have been criticized for the manner in which I conducted the July meeting of the mayor and alderman. I have been asked questions via emails and personal meetings. I sincerely apologize for my lack of maintaining an effective meeting decorum. It will not happen again. Threats, shouting, discussions with each other will no longer be acceptable or tolerated. Aldermen will address the mayor, motions will be discussed by the alderman, and votes taken. This is not a town hall meeting. If you would like to have them, I'm happy to schedule them. And then there will be that ongoing dialogue that we will no longer have in town meetings, town council meetings. I do not understand why citizens wait month to month to discuss the issues. You can certainly call town hall, make an appointment to see me, make sure I'm in. I'm in almost every day, all day. So there's no reason why you can't come and see the mayor. There's no reason why you have to wait a month. One of my duties is to follow the law, treat everyone fairly and equally. I stated this from the first day of my campaign, and I intend to continue it. I am pleased to note our town attorney, Mr. Sam Elliott, is present to answer alderman questions as we move down the agenda. I will have other comments as they give their reports, including water levels, but a couple of things that you should do so you're kept informed is to get on the Master Blast by contacting City Hall. And when we send out an email for town business, if you're on that list, you'll get that email. If you have questions or there's a problem with that, call City Hall anyway, and we'll try to resolve whatever issues there are. I attended last week in Gatlinburg the Tennessee Environmental Conference. Things are happening in the state, not only Montegoat. They talked about tire recycling and a new set of rules that'll be coming out probably next year. They're drafting them now. They talked about solid waste, that increased costs, 40% increase over the nine years. It's no secret that county mayor Michael Brady contacted me to let me know that Tracy City was just about busting at the seams at their convenience center, and he noted that the landfills are filling up quicker than we can handle. So there will probably be a push for recycling, there'll probably be a push for various garbage disposal methods, but it's something that's coming, and I just wanted to point those points out to you. They stressed it quite a bit in the meeting. One thing that came up at the last special call meeting, I cut the citizens short. In a special call meeting, there's a limited agenda. Only those items can be discussed on the agenda. There's no approval of secretary minutes, there's no treasurer's report, there's none of that. So after the meeting, we stayed and we had a discussion. That's fine with me, but we have to follow the agenda of the meetings. I think that's about enough for now, but I'll be back with other comments. Calendar of events, you know that there's a street dance coming up this upcoming Saturday. The next mayor and alderman meeting, regularly scheduled, will be September 30, the last Monday of the month. And there will be a 9/11 ceremony on September 11 that the police and fire departments are coordinating, as they were certainly among the first responders at all three sites. So that's some of the upcoming calendar events. Let's move on. Reports of committee and members, police department.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Council and citizens of Montegoat. We have it up?
No.
Some of the monthly numbers real quick, okay? Actually, look pretty great. We've, we had zero public intoxication as I'm going down. I'm just going to run to the ones that we actually did. We had two arrests for driverless revoked driving, one domestic, five drug-related calls, two driving without license issues, two identity theft issues. This is not, wasn't an actual theft of personal belongings, but actually of money from a bank. So just be mindful of who you let in your home that can actually see your bank statements. I'll just point that out, okay? Last month, we issued 82 citations and warnings. That went up from the previous month of 66. Total number of calls that was generated by our number one center was 362. That went up from 254. The number of total crashes, however, went down, two, but they did go down. So that number is consistently going down, which we want to see. We made six arrests. The majority of those were drug arrests. So that's going to be the month in numbers when they go there. The next thing I want to talk to you guys about is the stationary camera system. I know that's been the biggest talk. So as myself, the mayor, and the aldermen, board's members there, were actually looking into the, what, 34 pages that was bombarded with us, there were a few things that really didn't sit well with us. So we're going to put that on the back burner for right now, okay? But some of the common questions that was asked was, was there going to be a police officer in school zone? Yes. There was never ever mentioned that there was never going to be a police officer in school zone. Now, when you don't see a police officer in school zone, it's because they're on a call, okay? Whether that be, you know, a minor traffic incident or a major traffic, or a major incident like a suicide. So Montegoat will always be in a school zone if they can, okay? It's actually our pleasure to protect the children of Montegoat. So I don't want people to think that it's not on our priority, top of our priority list, okay? So as of right now, that is being put to rest, correct?
Yes, and I'll address that in a minute.
Okay. The aldermen should have a packet, maybe, I don't know, of something I'm going to be asking for tasers.
Yep.
It's been a long time, and it's, it's, it's been mentioned multiple times by me, we need new tasers. Our tasers are inadequate. They don't make them any longer. I can't even get batteries for them. So I'm asking for us to purchase or for you guys to look at us purchasing new tasers. So I want to ask you guys to at least discuss that tonight, if you would.
Well, and we can do that now. Do you have a report from the accountant as to how to proceed?
She said discuss it like a motion, and we'll get a budget amendment at the next meeting.
And we think this can be taken out from line items if you go with their budget figures, which is not an increase in interest, but we can take it out of the line item on a yearly So having reviewed that, I will accept a motion to move forward with the purchase of how many tasers?
There's eight there.
Eight tasers.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
So we're financing it for 60 months? Is that the, that's what it looks like?
Five years, yes.
Five years.
Do we have a cash price? Do we know?
It is there. The cash price is there, plus it's the finance price, it's going to be the cash price there, $45,000, I think is what it is for the tasers.
So there's no pay-it-all today cash price? It's, they're?
That's it. Unfortunately, it is.
You're not going to do it all, are you?
No.
Yeah, $45 would be a challenge.
Nice, nice to know what we're paying in interest, but I guess they're not going to tell us.
Correct. I tried to get that, but unfortunately, I wasn't privy to that.
Are there other vendors, or is this something we have to sole source? Is there?
Unfortunately, this is the only one that has sole sourced through law enforcement.
Probably why they won't tell us the interest.
Correct. You can buy a taser all day long on the internet, however, if you get into a situation where you have to end up in court, you're going to lose.
And we also need to note that he asked for this back in July, and it kept getting put on the back burner, and it's come to fruition now that we have to have these tasers. These guys' lives are in danger, and they don't have the equipment to protect their selves, and we expect them to protect us. It's craziness.
Well, that's crazy, but I'm sure you realize, as we all do on the council, that it's always a matter of financing and doing. We've gotten vehicles, we've gotten body cameras, we've gotten proper weaponry, best we could, case by case, and this is the next item on the list to purchase. So if there's no further discussion of the motion, roll call.
So hang, hang on. I'm just going to try to figure this out. It looks like we have, we have a five-year warranty, so they're warranted throughout the term of payment.
Correct. If we drop one, break one, we get one overnighted to us, and we get unlimited cartridges, so we don't have to purchase those as well. Those are about $12 apiece.
Do they require calibration?
They do not. So they do require to be arc-tested daily because there's a chip in it, so that if, for some reason, let's say, I'll taste you, and God forbid you die, well, then they would take that taser and they would send it off to make sure, one, I was arc-testing it properly, to make sure that the voltage was consistent. And when you arc-test it, it will tell you whether it's good or bad.
But that's something we'll do internally.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not anything that, I'm just trying to think about what the operating cost would be after, after the warranty expires.
Correct.
Do you have an estimated lifespan on them? Are they going to be, how long are they going to get paid off, or do they, do you think they're going to outlast?
So unfortunately, with, with anything like a taser, after five years, you'll probably get two more years out of it. So, so you're looking at seven years for tasers. Just like a patrol car, so.
And is the thought to take these annual payments out of the, the operating equipment budget for the police?
Correct.
And is that with that?
Correct. Oh, yes.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Can you tell us why you are bringing forth this taser thing again? Do you want to go into that?
Well, unfortunately, we had an officer, well, there was an investigator from Grundy County and one of our officers that was injured. Our officer got seriously injured because the taser malfunctioned, it didn't deploy as it was designed to do. So that's why we're going to forward yet again.
And he deployed how many times? Did he try to do his last?
Well, our standard training is to pull the trigger, deploy it once. If it doesn't work, take the cartridge off and do what they call a drive stunt, basically, where you actually take the taser, put it on a person's skin, and it took my knowledge and from what I've been told, it didn't work correctly.
Any other discussion from the aldermen?
Can I?
Roll call.
Can I say something? I mean, we expect you guys to protect us, but we can't give you the equipment that you need to defend yourself. And if that's our fault as a council, as an administration, I'm embarrassed by that. It took one of our police guys to get hurt before we can say yes to this? That's craziness. If you asked for this in July and we have put this off for that long, that's craziness. All we hear is, we don't have money, we're broke, we can't afford to do this. We budgeted for two cars, two police cars this year. We hadn't agreed on one, we put the rest of the money into capital reserve, okay? Then when we were going to do these cameras, $25 of that was going to go into the police department. Somebody asked at the special meeting, where is that money going to go? The mayor said it's going to go in general fund, so therefore, the police department's not getting the money there. We got to find this money, whether it's there, whether it's not there, to give these guys what they need to protect their self. This is ridiculous.
Thank you. Any other comments from the aldermen? Roll call, vote, please.
Doran? Yes.
Jessica? For sure. Sam?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Let me make a comment about the police department. I do not subscribe to any social media. I do, however, hear from citizens from time to time about postings involving the town. One of the recent postings concerned the police not being in the school zone. They were answering calls, as the chief explained earlier, concerning guns and other incidents that seemed to be very serious. Please do not post articles when you don't. They were answering calls, as the chief explained earlier, concerning guns and other incidents that seemed to be very serious. Please do not post articles when you don't have all the facts. The police chief and the district attorney will release information as appropriate at each case. I have long been a critic of the rumor mill. Some might be true, some might be false, we don't know. We'll wait for the official press release from the police chief and/or the district attorney, and I just want to get that out there. Okay, is there anything else that you had, chief?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Fire department.
Good evening, folks.
We've responded to third emergency calls for the month of August. We've done the annual required fit test and flow test for the SCBAs for all the firefighters, so they're not hurting up to date with the standards. I'd like to get y'all's thoughts on the fire department offering its first responder program, and we'll kind of work hand in hand with Grundy EMS. These guys will get their emergency responder license for the first responder to actually be able to respond to medical calls to help the citizens. There's a lot that goes into that. There's probably an agreement, too, that goes through EMS side, but just your thoughts on that stuff. I mean, all the guys is willing to do it, they would like to do it. I don't really think there's much cost that's going to incur from, from the supply side. That'll come a lot through EMS, who's going to be furnishing some of the equipment for it. Just kind of working on the preliminaries of that, to be able to offer the public a little bit of home. So that's on the table. We've been working on demonstrations and procurement specs to submit for our CBDG grant to get our equipment ordered. We've got another demo tomorrow night on one of our clients that we've been looking at. We've also been working on equipment. We've had a few breakdowns. Everything seems to be up and running and in good condition right now. We've used roughly five thousand gallons this month, so we've been trying to cut back on water usage with no rainfall. Questions on fire?
Any questions from the aldermen on the fire report?
Did the?
I will. Go ahead.
Did the, did the truck come back from service?
No. They've gotten all the parts. There's still two parts out for the hydraulics, the internal components of hydraulic cylinders, but they did get the big, the mass of the hydraulics back. So as soon as those two parts come, the gentleman, as of Thursday, told AJ that he's ready to put it back together. So we're right there, we can never get it back. They told us that, eight months.
Sounds right.
Yep. You want to do your code stuff here?
Well, if I may, let me address this first aid thing. The fire department responds to, as some of you may know, what they call lift assists. And if there's a medical situation when they get there to help someone off the floor, the extra training and the time that they're willing to spend towards this training would probably be a great benefit to the citizens. So I think it's something that is worth looking into. The chief and I have started talking about it. When we get all the facts and information, of course, we'll present it, but it's something that I think is worth looking into. So I thank you for that, chief. Hey, Jake?
For codes enforcement, for the mine, had four follow-ups for residential properties, regarding property maintenance, just like previous months. Yard maintenance with grass and stuff during summer, we're on, we're kind of getting towards the end of summer, so now it's going to move into this kind of accumulation of stuff in your yard and your porches. That's usually kind of the fall thing, everybody getting cleaned up for fall and build up, and then the yard signs for businesses and stuff, pulled multiple of them again this month, just making contact with owners of the signs and advising them of the sign ordinance. And that's, that's all I've got for codes enforcement.
Thank you. Do any of the aldermen have any questions?
There were some cases before, did those get resolved?
Four follow-up, actually Wednesday, we've got a follow-up on two of those cases, then Thursday follows the second two. That's your core follow-ups right there. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
On your building inspection side, there's four inspections that I've done. I've gotten one sort of occupancy for a commercial. Pizza Hut, Pizza Hut opens back up tomorrow, so y'all take it. I've got file management on one permit application for a commercial occupancy, so they're still working on gathering documentation for the, for the permit application. Anything on that?
Any questions on that report? Thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Next is parks and recreation. Where's Martha Ann?
That's not me, that's Todd.
Oh, that's.
That's Todd. I'm sorry, man.
We haven't been doing anything. So we had a little bit of a... So I asked them. As the mayor knows, that we've had some efforts to try to have increased interest in the committee, those, those have wavered. So we're, we're, we're trying again to get people that are interested, willing to serve on the committee and move forward. We still have plans to move forward with grants for next year, when those cycles come available. We'll be more on that coming up. We also plan on working with partnerships, because it looks like some of what people would like to do, we can't do ourselves because of, you know, not enough kids interested and not enough adults interested to move that forward independently, but we think we can partner with some local townships and help that move forward. So that's all we have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the aldermen on that? Martha Ann, I need your help, there's approval of the match for the tourism grant. Who's working on the tourism grant?
Jessica.
Jessica, do you have a report on that?
Last week, we finally got our tourism enhancement grant in. This is, the state of Tennessee will offer up to a hundred thousand dollars to things that the town could do to enhance people coming and enjoying our town. We needed Christmas lights, because the Christmas lights we have are pretty much non-functional or will be at greatly reduced size this year. And complicating that is that the light poles that we hang the lights on have very poor electrical connections. So just to give you an idea, the electrical connections on the fifty poles that we want to use will require seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars each pole for the repair, and the light fixture, which would be a snowflake of some type, are eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. They are LED lights, which will be an improvement over what we have before. So we'll hear on September thirteenth if we get the grant or not, and we've also included in the grant twenty thousand dollars for a rock sign that will go on the corner in front of the library, which will say something to the effect of, welcome to Mount Mont Eagle, gateway to the Cumberland Plateau, and be a fixture that sort of reflects our native rock up in this area. The grant is a total of a hundred thousand dollars. We are obligated for a match of five thousand dollars, and that's the match that we need to approve tonight. It would be paid for out of the tourism budget, so we have that money in the budget already.
What's the date that we'll find out? September when?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you. Any questions of Jessica on the grant proposal? I will accept a motion to approve the match, should we get the grant?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't have anything left, y'all do.
Thank you for that. Let me address while you're here then the water supply that Mr. Lay asked about. We are buying water from Tracy City. It is treated water already, so it's going directly into our water lines and not the lake, is that correct?
Right.
So the lake is waiting for rainfall. Is there any other way to put water in that lake?
Well, we're pumping from Cooley's now.
We are getting some from Cooley's still, we're in that range?
Turned it back on today.
Okay.
Yeah.
And other than rain, that's about it, right?
That's about it, yep.
Okay.
Right for money.
So that's the best we can do. Of course, I had wanted some conservation. I was told, no, we're not at that level yet. So as long as Big Creek has water and Tracy City has water, and we continue to buy water from Tracy City, we should be all right. And so far, their levels are satisfactory?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of John?
What's the lowest the lake's ever been?
Oh, I can't remember. Creek? I've seen those, just creeks through there.
So, yeah, according, according to your report, it's eight, eight foot four?
That's not my report. Dwayne done that.
Dwayne done that.
Good.
But that's where it is right now.
But I don't think so. I think six foot something.
I think it's less than eight-four.
I think Friday, I checked, it's six-four then, six-four, six-five.
Do you know why he's got the unaccounted water loss so high?
Nope. I don't, he, he's doing it.
Okay. It's more than double it was last month, and that's a, it's a bad month to have forty percent of your water go unaccounted.
I could, you'll have to ask him.
And I will do that and get an answer, that's important.
Now, the good news, I and I is almost nothing.
Yeah.
No rainfall.
Maybe because it didn't rain.
Yeah.
Okay, and we are proceeding with that, by the way. They're doing their additional camera work and starting work whenever their schedule permits, but they've mobilized some of their assets up here and they've started the project. Any other questions for John? Thank you. Street department, which requires, as you see on the agenda, the approval of the purchase of the mower. You've received bids. Is there any discussion on that? Excuse me. Chief, do you have anything to add, other than the mower?
No, just, boy, don't say forget it or not.
All right, you've received the bids in your packet. I'll accept a motion to approve the purchase of the mower.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Planning commission. Dan or any of the aldermen have any comments or questions on the planning commission? Okay. We are removing the first reading of campground special exception. That was due to the fact that the planning commission has to review it, and therefore, they had not done that. They review it and then refer it to the mayor and alderman. So this was put on, and we're not going to deal with that until the planning commission advises us. Other than that, I don't have anything on the planning commission in addition to that. Beautification and the tree board?
Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Martha.
I'm chairing the beautification committee, and we added the tree board to that, because in order to get some grants from the state, we have to have a tree board. You heard from Jessica on the tourism grant that comes out of our committee. We are also looking at replacing the gazebo in Anna Bickett Park. It's falling apart. The roof is falling in, the floor is dangerous. So we're looking at that. That's to let the aldermen know that at this point, it looks like about six thousand dollars, but we'll come to you probably next month with a proposal on that. We are changing what we do to increase participation at Christmas. We are going to have this year a Christmas tree trail. We want twenty individuals, businesses, churches, nonprofits, anybody who wants to decorate a tree. They're going to be out here around city hall, because we've got the problem with the lighting on Main Street. So we're going to do it over here. We'll have a, there'll be a competition, we'll have a hundred dollar prize, and then we're also going to add a scavenger hunt. We're trying to get the things for families to do. If you remember, if you went to, to the AIA report, which was actually in here, they said many people asked for things for families to do. And so we're going to have a scavenger hunt. We're going to place ornaments on, one ornament on each tree. We'll have a picture of it on a sheet of paper, and, and the families will go around and try and find the ornament and put where it was. They'll turn it in at the library, and there'll be a drawing, twenty-five dollars for the one that we draw up on that. So it's not a big prize, but it's, hopefully, it'll get the families out. And we're going to have a lighting ceremony for the trees and all of downtown on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. You know, you see all these movies where every little town has a tree lighting? Well, we don't have a tree lighting here, so we're going to have one, and we'll light all the lights at the same time, and hopefully, we'll get citizens out to celebrate. I think that's all. Any questions?
Any questions from the aldermen on the report?
What was the date on the lighting again?
The Saturday after Thanksgiving.
It's November thirty.
November thirty.
You know, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, if you want an example of volunteerism and staying with the project and doing all the work that's required just to get something organized, you should really use Martha Ann as your role model.
I've got a great committee of people, a great committee. I do want to say, along with what the mayor was just saying, we need more volunteers. We have beautification, we have the tree board, we have the Christmas celebration. We need to have more special events, citywide special events. That's one of the recommendations from the architectural group. One of the things that we have discussed is having public art. Well, we need a committee to think about public art. And we're trying to get a better digital presence on our website and with the, what do you call the email thing?
I call it a master blast.
Master blast. We're trying to get that going so that everybody will know what Mont Eagle is doing. So please volunteer, just let me know if you're interested in helping.
Thank you, Martha Ann. Need to mention Mont Eagle?
Sure. Thanks, thanks, mayor. So there've been a lot of conversation about what the next steps are for this process, and the committee has met, and one of the things that we decided to do early on was to think about how to create and do some outreach with our business leaders. So we're going to send a, a letter out to them shortly to, to, to have them, to get some input back from them. We also would like to get some input from the community, and so in the last workshop, the mayor and council talked about having a workshop, and so we would like to have a workshop this next month to gain public input from it. If you haven't seen it, the, the plan is available online, it's on the town website, it's been on the social media pages, if you do those things. For the, for the public comment meeting, we're hoping to have some printed copies, and so one of the things that we talked about in the workshop that I'd like for us to consider tonight is, is getting some printing done, so that we have some printed copies for the public meetings, so that people who do not have access to the computer or don't choose to look at it that way can, can be able to review it. We're leading up to the, to the next step, which we hope is, is sort of formal adoption of the plan by the town, and we need that for some of the, the grants that we're applying for. In particular, we've been talking most recently about the Main Street Community Grant Program, which is operated by the, by the state of Tennessee. which is operated by the, by the State of Tennessee. And so they offer funding for downtown beautification and streetscapes and business development. But we've got to have some sort of plan on, on the books that we are working toward before we can qualify for that. So I would encourage everybody to come to the public meeting. I think Deb's going to announce it, or do we have a date already? So it'll, it'll be circulated. It'll be an official public meeting, so we'll be looking for comments. In order to get some printed copies available for that public meeting, we probably need to approve some funding for that. So at the workshop, we saw, we were given two different samples. One was eight and a half by eleven, one was eight and a half by fourteen. The eight and a half by fourteen was a little bit easier to read, but it was more than double the cost for printing. And so I think it, with the way we've been talking about is, is getting a few more copies in the eight and a half by eleven. We think we can get a hundred copies, which we think would do for the foreseeable future, for about $700. And we've got that within the, the funding of the Tourism Development Grant. So I'd like to move that we authorize $750 from the Tourism Development Grant to go toward printing of the Imagine Mont Eagle Plan for, for use at the public meeting and, and beyond.
Okay. I'm calling that a motion from the committee. Because I'd need a second. Therefore, is there any discussion on the motion as presented by Nate? And once again, the dollar amount was $700 for a hundred copies?
It was seven fifty.
One question only on this matter. Is it on this matter?
What type, absolutely. What type paper will it be on? Photo? Plain paper?
It's, it's on, it's on plain paper. It's on plain paper. We're just trying to keep the printing cost down.
Seven fifty per page?
No, no. It's a, it's a bound document that is eighty, eighty, ninety pages.
Okay. The committee's working on that, Lucy, only on this subject?
Yes, yes. I just would like to volunteer to make a contribution to the senior citizens' size copies so that there'd be more available for people who have vision problems. So I will, can suggest something, but I will talk to you.
Get in touch with Nate. That'd be fine. Thank you. Okay. Is that your report? Okay. So there's a motion. No further discussion on the motion? Roll call? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So Nate, if you prepare that, and then we'll get together to pick a date as well for the meeting. That's great. Thank you. Dorian, do you have any report to give?
No.
Jessica?
No, sir.
Dan?
No.
Nate?
No.
Thank you. Under old business, we had down the unmanned traffic camera. We are removing that from the agenda pending further investigation as time goes on. So we're putting that on the back shelf, as the chief had outlined. So we're down to the first reading of ordinance thirteen, I'm sorry, ordinance fifteen dash twenty-four, site plan review. Is there a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance fifteen twenty-four?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on it?
Trying to find it.
What is the site?
Do you have it, please? Site plan review in ordinance to amend the Mont Eagle zoning ordinance by requiring site plan review by Planning Commission prior to BZA review of a special exceptions request in the town of Mont Eagle. BZA is Board of Zoning Appeal or Adjustment, wherever your background takes you for the A, but it's a site plan saying the Planning Commission wants to review it before it goes anywhere. And that would just be more of a help to the Board of Zoning Appeal to see what was involved with the Planning Commission and the site plan. So that's all this ordinance does, is put in an ordinance to amend the Mont Eagle zoning ordinance by requiring site plan review by the Planning Commission prior to BZA review of a special exceptions request. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor of accepting on the first reading, ordinance fifteen dash twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries. Next is a first reading of ordinance sixteen dash twenty-four, to remove convenience stores. And this, the caption is, "In ordinance to amend the Mont Eagle zoning ordinance to remove convenience stores as a permitted use in C1," which is basically the downtown business district, "and to add additional restrictions to section five-one-eight convenience stores in the town of Mont Eagle." Some of them include a minimum size, a maximum size of a convenience store, shelf items, and different guidelines that this ordinance would provide for. Is there a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance sixteen dash twenty-four?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Can somebody from the Planning Commission tell us what prompted this?
I will. Dan, go ahead.
Dollar General wanted to put another Dollar General in the O.K.O. lot, and they rejected that because they didn't want to put another Dollar General in Mont Eagle because they don't like the one that they have now, and they didn't want another one. So Dollar General came back and said, "Well, we're going to call it a convenience store." Well, that didn't work either. So then this ordinance was put together by the powers of faith.
And further to that, I had asked, is it going to be like a grocery store in Tracy City? And the response was no. Then we got into commercial and retail definitions, et cetera, et cetera. And it became something that we thought the, this particular ordinance might help clarify what a convenience store is. There's nothing specifically other than commercial and retail operations, so that's why the Planning Commission, as I understood it and remember it, thought it best that we defined our terms. So is there any other questions on the first reading of ordinance sixteen dash twenty-four? All it does basically, I think it's just remove it from C1.
Well, the parceling question for Dollar General was not C1, so it must do...
No, I'm referring to the ordinance now. It's permitted, not permitted in C1. And to add additional restrictions to the section that talks about convenience stores. That's the five-eighteen.
Here are the sections. Excuse me. Sorry, my glasses aren't good enough to read them out there. So we're limiting the size to 5,000 square feet.
Yes.
Off-street parking and convenient pedestrian access will be required for every convenience store. Convenience store must operate as 24/7 facilities. This requirement may be waived by the Board of Zoning Appeals on a case-by-case basis. Convenience stores must offer a minimum of 500 stockkeeping units. And the product mix of SKUs include grocery-type items and also include items from the following groups: beverages, snacks, including confectionaries, they can sell candy, tobacco, and fuel. Okay, so that's the, that's the restrictions that you, that came from the Dollar General
Which was in your packet, right?
Yeah. I can't, I can't read it right now. So I read it in your packet, but my memory's not that good.
In the future, too, it was suggested, and a very good suggestion, that we will be posting with the agenda, the ordinance involved. So you can see it. The Aldermen have seen it, and it'll just be good information for you all. So is there, on the first reading, is there a motion to accept on first reading of sixteen dash twenty-four? That's been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the first reading of ordinance seventeen dash twenty-four, building permits. That caption is, "An ordinance to make additions to section 1203 of building permits of the zoning ordinance of the town of Mont Eagle." And therefore, they just add appropriate language for building permit expirations. You have that in your packet? Is there a motion to accept on first reading seventeen dash twenty-four?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I would like to get Travis's opinion on this. Have you read this ordinance? Would you like to look it over real quick?
Well, with all due respect, this is for the Mayor and Alderman Council to decide if this is going to be the instruction to the enforcement officer.
Well, with all due respect, though, that code enforcer needs to tell us if it's good or not.
This basically talks about the building permit expiration and the twelve months, those things that you've discussed in accordance with the International Building Code, I believe.
Yeah, so under the 105.5, what I'm gathering.
You want me to scroll down, Travis?
Yes, please. Another thing you could do is pass it on the first reading and give him a chance to look at it before the second reading.
There'd be a public hearing for this ordinance?
There, there should be at the next, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
So this is something that we talked about mostly, yes, a year and a half ago.
I'm aware of this, and I approve of this. This is already in the International Code. This is just kind of putting it on the municipal level.
Yeah, it just got dropped when Anya took another job as our planner.
I support that.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the Alderman on seventeen dash twenty-four? One question, Grant, on this matter only?
Yeah, I was just curious about the one, where the one-tenth of an inch came from? It seems awfully low for, for giving a pass on, on work. It's in the one, two, third paragraph or so.
Oh, concerning the weather?
Yeah, it says weather, there was mention of a tenth of an inch being a precipitation that would be considered a weather delay. We get a tenth of an inch.
We can, we can discuss that. It may be enough to interfere with pouring or something like that, and I don't know. But I think the closing sentence with the National Weather Service would be more the guiding light, but we can certainly look at that for the public hearing.
That'd be great. I just want to make sure it wasn't, surely that's not a national requirement or a national restriction. And there, I think it's something we ought to consider for us.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion from the Alderman? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ordinance on the first reading carries. Resolution eight dash twenty-four, cooperative purchasing. As I understand, if this lets us use agencies that we want to use to purchase goods for the city, including a fire vehicle or police car, whatever, from Wilson County Chevrolet Buick GMC, and an organization called Sourcewell. So this is in your packet as well. I think we've discussed it. Is there a motion to accept resolution eight dash twenty-four?
I'll make motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of passing resolution eight dash twenty-four, cooperative purchasing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution zero-seven dash twenty-four concerning, in this case, the RBT truck stop. But let me first say, this is just this case with these conditions and these issues that came up. If another developer has these same issues, they'll be governed by this resolution.
Could someone read the resolution? We've never seen it.
I know. This is for the Mayor and Alderman. We can publish it, and I'll go over the highlights. But please, we're not going to have a conversation back and forth. A resolution of the town of Mont Eagle terminating vested property rights is provided by TCA, Tennessee Code Annotated, thirteen dash four dash three-ten. It cites all of that, and the now therefore is that pursuant to TCA thirteen dash four dash three-ten, the town of Mont Eagle hereby terminates any vested property rights of RBT LLC created by and associated with the site plan approved on July 7th, 2021, for Marion County map and parcel. That's, that's the resolution. I hope you all heard me. I think there's a pretty broad-based knowledge of what this infere, impacts. And I understand, Sam, do you have any comments? And do you want to introduce anyone?
I've got a couple of comments, and I will tell you that, that RBT has an attorney here with them as a matter of courtesy. I'll give him three to five minutes to speak his piece on that. The important part of this resolution is a finding that a stop work order was issued on February 1, 2023, and actually, that's February 2, 2023, so that correction will need to be made, revoking the building permit application based on five violations of municipal ordinance and/or provisions of the, of the building code. And so this, this is a finding. You have, you have three options, and it's my understanding that some of you would like to know the entire history of this, and I'm prepared to give that if you want that now. On June 14th, 2021, this board, as it was constituted at that time, approved a rezoning of a certain tract to make the, the proposed truck stop possible.
Sam, could you speak a little bit more into the microphone? I don't think you're being picked up.
I'm usually so loud, it doesn't, doesn't matter. Can you pick me up now?
Gotcha. That's much better. Okay, great.
On June 6th of 2021, after that approval on June 14th of '21, there was an initial site plan approved with certain conditions. A building permit was issued on July 14th, '21 as to the building, and on September 14th as to some concrete. Section 1203 of our zoning ordinance says that the approval of either the site plan or the building permit starts a vesting period. A lawsuit were filed by certain citizens against the town and the Planning Commission and RBT on August 24th, 2021. One lawsuit challenged the actual rezoning as an exercise of arbitrary and capricious power, so to speak, and the other challenged the, the action of the Planning Commission in approving the site plan because if the zoning ordinance that was approved was, it was illegal, then thus the site plan was illegal. Chancellor Willis ruled in the town's favor on June the 10th of 2022. Per section 1204, the zoning ordinance, building, and also, it's my understanding, the building code too, building permits are void after six months unless substantial progress has been made on the project at that time. On February 2nd, 2023, the building inspector revoked or suspended both permits, which is what's referred to in your, in your resolution, except it says February 1 instead of February 2. A letter of the same date was sent to the developer that advised them of the suspension and what it would take to get the project back on track. Ninety days have passed since that time, and the required steps, it's my understanding, were not taken. On May, in May of 2023, the Court of Appeals affirmed Chancellor Willis in both of those cases, and so the lawsuit relative to the rezoning was, was won, and the Court of Appeals approved it. You have three options. You have an option to deem the vesting period expired by the operation of law, as three years have passed since the site plan was approved, and because the building permit expired after six months without renewal. And then the building inspector will... And then the building inspector will enforce that accordingly. You may, secondly, you may approve this resolution, which makes a written finding that the failure to cure the issues raised by the building inspector's findings in February 2023 terminates the vesting period. And third, you may make a written finding that notwithstanding the failure to cure that additional time is in the best interest of the community, and you can extend the vesting period. Those are the three options you have afforded tonight.
Can you give me option one again?
Deem the vesting period expired by operation of law, as three years have passed since the site plan was approved, and because the building permit expired after six months without renewal.
Okay.
And then I'd ask, as a matter of courtesy, let Mr. Horton speak for a few minutes. Please.
I'm Dale Horton from Chattanooga. Most of my life's been spent in federal state law. I've been in many of these meetings, many, many times, and there's always a tension between property, property rights, ownership of the owner, and public interest. I think a little bit of history here is that RB, RBT is a local company. Mitch Killorn and sister, brother-in-law, form this company. Piledaw Next Door is owned by Berkshire Hathaway and Mr. Warren Buffett from Nebraska. So this is a, this is a local issue, not a foreign investor issue. One thing I think should be pointed out is that when this suit was filed, the city spent a lot of money defending these suits, and defending the action of this board. And, and it was affirmed. The chancellor upheld it, and then it was appealed. There would have been a right to appeal this to Supreme Court Center City that would have expired late last fall. As a practical matter, this vesting period and this period was tolled, in essence. There would have been impractical and illogical for RBT to go ahead and start construction while the case was on appeal. What if the Court of Appeals had reversed and said, you can't, you can't build anything on this particular lot because the zoning we're setting aside, the rezoning? So the practical matter, if you look at statutory intent of the code section of society, 134310, there is a reference to the applicant exercising due diligence. And, and if you look at subsection D1, it says that the vesting period, you can't, the vesting period means that the protocol or the procedures in effect at the time he started this process would apply, not, not any new ones. So he started actually working on this project in 2021, ordered tanks, got a grading permit, degrading, and spent a lot of money on it. So as a practical matter, he can't do anything until his appeals case was over. You also look at the statute, and it talks about the fact that there should be a deemed tolling of the statute if there's a moratorium. By analogy, there in essence wasn't a moratorium because of the practical matter, he could not do anything because of this citizen lawsuit until the Court of Appeals affirmed. And the 60-day period to appeal to Supreme Court expired, which had been sometime in July 23. This action was taken on forfeit year, so to speak. It occurred months before the appellate case was finished. So at that time, it should not have, it should not have been terminated because of the tenancy of a case. I think the, the proper thing to do here is to recognize his vested rights, grant the extension. He knows what he has to do to follow through on the permit. And certainly, the first option would be contrary to the, the construction and the meaning and fairness of the statute in question. Having him start all over is certainly not a rational, fair solution either. The only rational, fair solution, if you consider the statutory history of this code section, which was enacted, I think, 2014, if I'm not mistaken, would be to recognize that he has vested rights and extend those rights so he can proceed with his project. He does have communication of what is required to, to complete this project. He's ready to comply with that. It's been three, I guess, now, built this property in March 2020. It's now been four years and six months. And time to finish the project and recognize his vested rights.
Thank you. Sam?
Well, I mean, what I advised you's not changed by what Mr. Norton Horton had to say. His reading of statute's a little expansive from my standpoint, but it's ultimately up to you what you think is appropriate in the best interest of the town, one way or another.
I'll accept a motion from the aldermen as to their wishes.
I move that we declare the vested property rights terminated by force of law. Anything else I need to add? This is option one. This is moving away from my, the resolution.
Probably a good idea to, I'll also move your, move your resolution too, if you're going, if that's, if that's the route you're going.
Okay. Well, so I, I move then to approve resolution 17 dash 24. I, I offered Rodney an extension last month, and he told me in no certain words he wasn't interested. So I'll make that, make the motion.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? That's my understanding. The motion dies for lack of a second?
Motion dies for lack of a second. So you either have option one, or you have option three. If you exercise option three to give him additional time, you must make a written finding that it is in the best interest of the town to do so.
I make a motion at this point in time to offer the contractor, the developer, an additional season of time to accomplish his task in building his project.
You want to specify?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
You want to specify a certain amount of time?
What do you like that you guys?
90 days.
90 days to do what?
To get the, the rest of the punch list done on the permit that he's already been given an application for, and to move on with the project.
Okay. That's a motion, and, and.
Before I ask for a second, Sam, point of information. When you say written, what does that mean?
What I'm about to ask Mr. Sargent is this, and as part of that, that you want it recorded in the minutes that, that it is in the best interest of the town to do so?
Absolutely.
So you have your motion, Mr. McNair.
Do you have that? Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? The motion dies for lack of a second.
So all you have left is that, that, the determination by the building inspector that it's expired by operation of law.
And so you're asking us to ratify that decision of the building inspector?
It would be, it'd be better if you did.
I move to ratify the decision of the building inspector that the site plan is expired by force of law.
Is there a second to?
Did he say by force of law, Mr. Sargent?
By operation of law.
By operation of law.
By operation of law is what should be.
Explain this.
Is there, excuse me?
By operation of law means that, that he had a certain amount of time to get going, and he didn't. And, and you've, you've not made a determination. Can I, can I finish advising them, Sergeant? You've not made a determination that, that the failure to do, the, the failure to comply with the building permit in February is, is found by the building inspector. Y'all, y'all avoided that determination. You avoided the determination that it's in the best interest of the town to give him additional time, as Mr. Sargent requested. So what's left is, what's actually happened on the ground, and what actually happened on the ground was that he had three years to get going, and he did not. Now, his excuse, according to Mr. Horton, and, and it's an equitable excuse, is that there was lawsuit pending, and he couldn't be expected to spend money on that. That's up to you whether that's a good excuse or not. If it's a good excuse, then you kind of need to go with Mr. Sargent's motion, and if it's not a good excuse, then make the determination that by operation of law, his, uh, options have expired.
Well, I think we're down to the final choice, as Mr. Sargent's motion died for lack of a second.
I, I, I'm just explaining.
Right, okay. We agree. Thank you. So Nate, you made that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Let me, his vested property rights have expired by law regardless of anything we decide they have expired. Am I right or wrong?
That's what we believe. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Horton, Mr. Horton disagrees, but.
Okay. Was he ever issued a stop-work order?
His, and Mr. Lawyer's in the room here somewhere. There he is. Was he, was he actually issued a stop-work order, or was he just, just told that his building permit had expired?
That was a second. I issued a stop-work order, and there was a list available to remediate that, to fix that.
Okay.
That was a second of what year?
23.
2023. Before the lawsuit was filed?
Yes.
So was that stop-work order ever lifted?
No, ma'am.
So how does that play into it?
Well, again, he's got to have a valid building permit to proceed.
Does he have a valid building permit?
He has a permit application into me right now because, as an inspector, I have to have acknowledgement from legislation that he has a vested site plan. If he has a vested site plan, that goes along with your vested property rights because I have to have a site plan to issue a permit. So right now, Rodney's in the process of a checklist to get his building permit reinstated.
But the question would be, the question would be, if his vested rights have expired by operation of law, does he have to comply with what the law was in 2021, or the law is now, as far as development standards?
See, my thing, and I'm kind of torn here, and I don't really know which way to go, I understand that his vested property rights have probably expired. He's going to have to go back before the planning commission with a new site plan regardless, right? Am I correct on that?
That's fine.
I don't want it to have to cost him, out the yin yang, to, to do another site plan. So that's where I'm kind of standing. I don't know which way to go. So I think I'm just going to abstain from a vote because I don't know enough to do it.
Are there any other comments from the aldermen on this motion? Are there any other comments from the aldermen on this motion? Yeah. Nate, would you repeat the motions, please?
I move that the, the.
That the town deems the, the vested property, or the vested rights.
Expired by operation, by operation of law.
Okay, and that was seconded? That was the very first motion he made, and he did not get a second.
No, that was the second motion I made, and it was seconded.
So was this a new motion, Mr. Allen? I'm just asking.
The first motion, the first motion was made was on option two, which was a finding that, a particular finding on, as reflected in the resolution, okay? The second motion was to, just to deem that it's in the public interest to give extra time. The third motion is to, just to deem that the, that it's expired by operation of law. No, two, two different motions. Yeah, it was. So the question is.
So I had made the motion. It was seconded by Jessica.
Jessica?
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Roll call? Roll call vote, please.
I'm going to abstain.
Jessica?
Yes.
No.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes. And now?
You're done.
Okay. There being no further business on the agenda, I'd accept a motion to adjourn?
Did I ask the question? At the last meeting, y'all voted to give a permit and everything. Fine, we're in it again tonight.
Okay. Let me explain this. I understand it. There's an application for a permit, and then there's the issuance of a permit. I think you're still in the application phase. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lawyer.
They've actually submitted their site plan to the state. I'm waiting to hear back from that. They've got an email coming to me from TDOC. They're waiting on a report from TDEC as well.
Well, the two things we like, getting a permit, don't mean contain to the city. It contains to the state anyway.
Well, that's.
I mean, they said that's their problem. That's really, I got a lawyer here tonight, and the one is that the TDOC deal with the road, they ain't got nothing to do with the city. That's got to do with the state, I call them. The far thing has got nothing to do with the city. It, it's got to do with the state. So we should get a permit last week. We got two things that is with the state. And, and y'all bobbly around here voting on it again tonight. This ain't legal, guys. I'm a little smarter than that, and I got a lawyer here.
Okay, well, you, you have a lawyer, and we have a lawyer, and if they feel that they want a conference after the meeting, that's fine. I don't know. I'm not qualified to rule.
Well, this, this is it.
All I know is, all I know is, that motion was made and passed, and if there's future discussion, then that would be fine.
I might come motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Second. Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.